Commissioner's status update, it is January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is ten a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matarri, and Duncan. Are there changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. And public comment? Anybody want to make public comment at the beginning? Hearing none. We'll go ahead to our first item, which is Justice Center update from Turner, Townsend, Herry. And we also have a subsection, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. So, Mr. Mendez.
Good morning. David Mendez from Turner and Townsend, Herry. So, first off, this is additional costs. So, additional cost reporting so far, currently, there's only one item that's come out of plan review that's an additional cost, and that was a tree that they're adding to the landscaping plan. So, we should expect through this plan review process that there are going to be things that are going to be added by A H J or the agency having jurisdiction. So, Fire Department, Building Department, City Planning will have items that will come up. That is the reason for keeping the design contingency. If you've gone through the GMP proposal from the contractor, you'll notice that they kept in the three percent design contingency and the three percent construction contingency. The design contingency, that will be up to you to decide whether we want to keep that or not. And so, that's the contractor is their concern, and the reason for keeping that in is that they have not gone through plan review on a lot of this, and they feel that there might be additional costs regarding the design. So, that's the thought there. As you've seen from the GMP, the proposal that was sent by the contractor, they came in significantly under their anticipated costs. And they go through in the proposal where those numbers come from, the V E savings that they have, exterior cladding, they had five hundred thousand in savings, interior finish, a million, electrical load reduction, a million dollars. They released their allowances, so now they know what the scope is. So, those allowances are now are all zeroed. That was a three hundred thousand savings. And then bid day savings, they said that they realized seven hundred thousand less than they had anticipated. And they contribute that to the good bidding environment. Some added costs that you should, when you're looking at that proposal, you should be aware of, they're including the cabling, which we asked them to separate. And the reasoning, I'll let them go through their reasoning, but that's a question that needs to be explored in discussions with the contractor. They felt to expedite to meet the schedule requirements, that they needed to do that themselves. And they also were encouraged strongly to pay extra for expediting the switchgear. I know that that was mentioned previously. And in order to get that going and meet the schedule that we've set forth for them, they had to, they felt it was prudent to go ahead and pay that extra fee. I've asked them what that fee amount was, and if we've got commitment, date commitments, both without the fee and with the fee, so that we can make a, I think it's too late at this point, but we want to make sure that we understand what those costs are. There's some alternates that they'll need direction on. There are six of them listed on that sheet. If you go through them, don't really, I don't think you need to spend too much time looking at that until you've received their explanation of what those, the benefits and costs of taking those alternates.
David, I see five. Is there another place that I'm missing, the six?
Let me double-check. Maybe a repeated one. Thermal break, PVC versus T P O, E I F S, anti-graffiti coat, oh, I wonder why they pulled that out. There's an anti-graffiti coating that they're, they said is kind of a no-brainer that we need to include that. And that's, so that's the lower part of the building being coated with a product that makes removal of graffiti easier.
Okay, so that's just included, then?
I think they must have taken that, then. And that's a ninety-seven hundred dollar add. So, there are the six of them to talk. There seems to be a disagreement by Maintenance Department and the architect on the ceramic tile versus L V T. So, we need to really explore that one, because it's really a preference, cost of maintenance and cost of construction difference. Be attentive to the notes at the bottom of the proposal. Items will, that will likely add cost to the project, clarifications and the exclusions. So, we should go through those in detail at next week's meeting with the contractor. As I mentioned, that they're still carrying a three percent design contingency, that is eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, two twenty-eight. And that's intended for plan review comments and design clarifications. So, that's what I have for you today. Do you have any questions?
No, it's just really exciting news. So, that is great. I'm looking forward to next week and can go over some of these alternates and potentially even save more money. So, okay, questions?
No, thank you.
I think you're doing a great job. Thank you for staying on top of this.
All right. Item two, the building lease for P M R. Sylvia, did you want to give us an update?
Sylvia, proud for the record, at today's business meeting at two o'clock, we will be presenting a lease agreement for the board's consideration. We've worked out all the terms and conditions and the insurance. Dave Ferguson has been tremendous on our side of the house of navigating this with me, and they took the language he proposed for our insurance. And so, we're ready for, to move on and get this completed and then start in March with renovations.
And then, the other thing, too, is they're going to have the abatement done before March first.
Yes, they will have that done before we take possession of it.
Great. Questions? Oh, we skipped F F and E. Okay, we'll have to come back to you, David. Any questions for Sylvia?
No, thank you for the update, and I'm glad that we're going to get this thing buttoned up today.
Yes, very exciting. Questions? No? Okay. Sorry, we've got to go back to item one, because we skipped over F F and E. So, that's our furniture fixtures and equipment. And you got an inventory for some furniture that we have access to.
My understanding is that they have gone through and looked at the furniture, done an inventory on it. Now, we need to see how that fits. I've requested that we put together a small committee to go through and get the people that are involved, the decision-makers, on whether we should take that V E suggestion of reducing the number of offices in the third floor. And part of that will be based on how that furniture fits into those offices. Should it be a cub, I believe that that's mainly cubicle furniture, so whether we should change to that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, so it'd be good to hear from the prosecutor in this working group, because they, their attorneys need actual offices. So, we'd have to make sure that they're all accounted for. But, yeah, I think the facilities working group identified the prosecutor, adult misdemeanor probation, the courts. So, anyone else that's going to be on the F F and E? Yeah, adult misdemeanor probation. So, yeah, so we'll have three for your working group to go over furniture.
So, the other issue was how much money the state is going to contribute to the courtroom furniture? And Colleen is working on that?
Carlene, yeah.
Carlene is working on that, and I don't have that report back, but there's some question about what that dollar value will be, and then what we can include, the cost of the furnishings, what that should be.
Yeah. And then, you mentioned cabling earlier, and I meant to follow up on that. We're still looking at the sole source. We believe that it can be sole source, so that number will go down, if that is the case.
We'll need to talk to the contractor and get clarification on what they...
They're actually submitting another bid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, perfect.
Yeah. So, yeah, great. Thank you, appreciate that. And Sarah will coordinate getting those folks together with you. So, all right, anything on furniture?
Nope.
Okay. And thank you for the team who went out and inventoried all that furniture last Friday. I appreciate our Sarah, Jonathan, and our community development folks did that. So, did you have a question, or you're ready for the next one?
Yeah, I'm ready for the next one.
Okay, fantastic. Item three, and this is authorized point person for ARPA HVAC and jail generators. And Julina?
Good afternoon. There we go. In, with the dissolution of R M O, there's just been a couple of questions that have come up. And with David taking over the justice building portion, we just needed some clarification on who we would have be the point person for the HVAC project, ARPA project, obviously, as well as the jail generator. And this specifically would be for who's going to be handling the negotiation, negotiating of the contracts. So, we didn't know if it would be Tom for the jail and then Greg for the HVAC. So, we just needed some clarification on that.
Those are the two most logical, and I know both of them are up for the task. So, do you have any questions or concerns on those two?
My only concerns are that, one, we have people who are knowledgeable, and, two, are accountable. As long as they're, they fit those two criteria, I'm fine with whoever.
Yeah, they both do.
Dorian, did you have anything to add to that?
I think that pretty much covers it. And the reason being like Julina said, we're getting close to probably setting up a meeting for negotiation, and we just didn't know who needed to be that person that was sitting in and actually having the negotiation meeting.
Okay, and did you want one of the commissioners as well? Or just...
That is a...
That's up to you, guys.
Yeah, definitely up to you guys. If you think that it would be necessary or a good idea, then I think that it would be good.
Okay. Thoughts on that, Bill?
I don't think it's necessary, but...
Okay.
Yeah, the only issue I have is that, you know, this is a board, and it's a single entity. And so, having people that come before the board who are accountable is really what's more important, as opposed to a commissioner getting involved with some of these issues, because it just gets into question of, you know, how much we can talk about these things outside of board meetings, and how much we can be kept up to date. And I prefer to have a person who can actually be held accountable before the board when they're kind of championing a project.
And that's what we already have, it's just would be, a commission would be in addition. I mean, you're pretty good in negotiations, aren't you?
You know, with the stuff that I don't, I'm not knowledgeable about, I would argue that David Mendez would be the better person, because he knows what questions to ask. That's the problem, is I don't know what questions to ask when it comes to a million-dollar HVAC system. And that's why, you know, I try to avoid getting involved in subject matters that I just don't have experience in.
Sure. So, we could talk to Greg and Tom and see if they're comfortable, if they would like any, if they feel like any additional people would need to be involved.
I spoke with Tom this past weekend, and he indicated that he was the point person, but I just, we wanted clarification, because I don't know if he realized, you know, the contract aspect of it, so.
Okay. And Dave, do we need a motion for this, or just direction is fine, that they're going to handle it?
Just direction.
Okay, great. Item four, authorized point person for signatures on grant reimbursement for Panhandle wastewater block grant.
Okay. So, again, just wanting some clarification on who would be the person to sign off on the reimbursement requests. The Department of Commerce requires an elected official, and it was my understanding that you, Leslie, had given Jody the authorization to do that, and she's obviously no longer a county employee. So, we were thinking that if you guys could give me the authorization, then I could sign off on them. I review them already, they're prepared by Dorian, and so, I would just be the one signing off on them. It's a once a month, and right now, they're very minimal, like this last one was twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So, I don't know that it's worth the board's time to come before you once a month to request, you know, your authorization.
I'm fine with that. Are you...
Yeah, absolutely. All the confidence in the world with you on this thing, so, thank you.
And just so that you're aware, there is a form that would need to be signed, then. So, I believe you did one previously for Jody for the project, so it'll just be the same form, and then both you and Julina would need to sign it.
Yep, that's not a problem. So, I would take a motion to authorize that. That way, you can bring me the form, and we can put it on consent calendar.
Yeah, I move that we authorize Julina Hildreth as the point person for signatures on grant reimbursement for Panhandle Village wastewater block grant.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, we now have three executive sessions. We can go into them, and then, as people cycle in and out for their specific item, I will keep track for staff. And actually, I think T N E do a pretty good job of that as well, when people come in and out. I would also actually ask it be handled in time priority. So, for instance, item six is going to be about five minutes, item seven, probably ten minutes, and then item five, hopefully, by the end of day today. So, that is a joke, but it'll be longer. So, if there is no disagreement, then I would take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seven four dash two zero six in the order of priority, one C, one B, and then one D.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
All right, it's 10:56 as our motion to exit.
I move that we exit executive sessions 1C, 1B, and 1D.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, go ahead if you want to talk about items five, six, and seven. So, we'll start with five.
Five, we're exiting with no decision.
Okay.
Six, I move that we approve the chair to make an offer and to sign.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, seven?
And seven, I move that staff proceed to discuss or as discussed.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Public comment. Mr. Neal, nothing? Okay, anybody online? 10:57, meeting adjourned.